Welcome to One Voice at a Time. Once again, it's election season in Londonderry. It's 2017, and we have four candidates running for town council with two positions open. So I have taken on the great task of having each one of them on for half an hour. They can tell you whatever they like about themselves, and you can decide whether or not you choose to vote for them. So now we are ready with Ted Coates, who's on the ballot. And he better be Ted. He said there were two, but he thinks he's Ted on the ballot. How long have you been here?
I've been in town for 26 years. Our family moved away for about four years to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and then we went back to town. We're on one side of Pillsbury, and then we moved to the other side of Pillsbury. You know, I grew up here in town. I was a Boy Scout in town, an Eagle Scout in the high school marching band, played rec soccer, greatly involved at church at St. Mark's with the Knights of Columbus. Built the prayer walkway.
Did you mind if I asked you when you graduated from high school?
I graduated in 2005. I built the prayer walkway at St. Mark's Church.
I remember that. I remember that you did that.
It was just about 300 man-hours, $2.95 to be exact.
Was that as an Eagle Scout?
As an Eagle Scout, yep.
I'd say I do remember that, yeah.
We had a Purshner donated statue, so it was very wonderful. So certainly, I mean, it really started my experience in doing, I guess, a bit of construction and maintenance. And then from there, I went on to...
And some community service.
Exactly. And then from there, I went on to college at Suffolk University to get my business management degree. And then I came back, and I worked at quite a few places, and I started my career in property management. So I have about six to eight years in property management, with a few other careers mixed in. But, you know, the recession kind of hit all of us in certain ways, unfortunately. But largely, my experience is in property management, knowing how the maintenance of the buildings and how to really manage time and money for a lot of capital projects. And that's a lot of where I see the town council position is.
There's always been a lot of that going on.
Exactly. There's a lot of capital projects that happen, or let alone just a lot of daily maintenance that happens. You know, you get requests at the town council for, you know, lists of items from Mr. Cotton that it's like, well, this, this, and, you know, does this make sense, or do we need to revisit this? And it's, you know, that's a lot of my experience on a day-to-day basis. And I've also gone on to get my MBA in finance from Southern Hampshire University. So I'm very versed in finance and the budgets and putting budgets together on a daily basis. I put budgets for condo associations together all the time, so I know exactly how the budgets go.
Okay, so you really understand that process.
Exactly, as well as, I was on the budget committee for a term and chairman for two years of it. So certainly, I know the town's budgets as well as building maintenance budgets. So it's helping putting the two of them together to really bring the town to the future.
Have you been on another committee besides the budget committee?
Yes. So I've been on the town master plan for a few years, as well as I've been on the town planning board for about, I think, just about two years now. Been as an alternate.
All right. So what kinds of things do you think we need to be looking at in Londonderry, keeping our eye on?
So certainly, we have quite a few huge developments that are coming to town, whether they be residential or commercial, like on Pettingill Road. And we have quite a bit of new tax revenue coming to town. So it's a bit of, you know, an even keel that you need to have with the monies that are coming in, but also keep for our services that we provide everyone, but not also overburden the taxpayers by increasing the tax rates.
Okay, so try to keep that revenue matched to the expenses.
Exactly. And not drastically increase either people and services, or vehicles, or what we can provide, but also at the same time, you know, keep with the pace of, you know, our growth.
Our growth, okay.
Exactly. Because unfortunately, yes, the businesses, we do need to have police and fire be able to service them, as well as if we have new residences coming, we need police and fire to service them as well.
Yeah, and the seniors can keep you kind of busy, too.
Exactly. We have quite an aging population.
Yeah, we've got a lot more seniors than we used to, percentage-wise, I think.
Exactly, with many 55-plus neighborhoods, as well as with the new development near the Crossroads Mall.
And those of us who just hung out here until we turned 55-plus.
Exactly. And those of us who are still staying in the homes. So certainly, yes, we do have an aging community, which does unfortunately burden the fire department and the ambulance services that they provide. And many times, we are working on mutual aid, servicing other towns, but also then other towns are servicing us as well.
Yeah, we have that reciprocity going, which I think is important, too.
It is very important, but certainly, I think over time, we really need to increase our firefighter...
Kind of take care of ourselves as much as possible, yeah.
And really, that's one of the big important things to me, is we need to increase our number of firefighters, but also number of firefighters on duty. Yes, we did pass a bill to increase the number of firefighters that we have in total, but it didn't increase enough that are on duty at a certain time in their shifts. And that's really where we hit a snag. And if we don't have enough people to be able to service the people in town, how are we doing our citizens the right service? And I know it was quite a fight to get the firefighters bill elected and passed in town two years ago. But it's really what we need for the future. We are a growing town.
I think it's hard sometimes when people are not, the people who aren't particularly using that service, for them to understand how important the service is.
Exactly.
It's hard to get that across sometimes.
And when either you're having a health emergency, or a vehicle emergency in the snow, or you have a fire in your home.
Slip and fall, anything.
You need them, or a slip and fall, you need them. And if they're not coming when, you know, you really need them, you then realize how much we really need to improve our services. I know in the past years, we've had, oh, I think it was about 10 years ago, we had a fire at a home that we could not get to in time, and we unfortunately lost two individuals at that time.
The mother and daughter.
And...
Yep, that was really sad.
It was greatly, and...
And should have been unnecessary.
Exactly. And if we had the manpower to be able to get there in time, we should have been able to have done it.
And was water also an issue, if I remember correctly?
It could be.
Something about getting enough water up there, I think.
It could be, but I don't want to be quoted wrong on that one.
Yeah, no, 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 that was me. I said that. Yeah, no, but it was definitely, it was a tragedy that we would never want to see repeated.
Indeed. And certainly, certainly, the other big side to our town is we are growing.
Yes.
With it being...
Like it or not.
Like it or not, we are now becoming, as some people have said, and some of the economists, that we are now the new hub of the state.
We're a hub.
We are, because with Pettingill Road, with the capacity of that, we can become a bigger economic output than the Pease Air Base, which has been one of the biggest economic outputs of the state.
I was not aware of that.
Because it's just about 1,000 acres of land, with what could be built on there. It could become a bigger driver to the state with it being right next to the airport, as well with...
And it is on the Londonderry side of the airport. We would get the revenue, right?
Exactly.
Just to make sure.
With the potential of maybe new hotels, new restaurants, but as well with new office and new industrial coming, whether it's in the pipeline or not, but it's the availability of it there.
So we need to be getting prepared.
Exactly. And certainly, that will, you know, over time, potentially drop the tax rates, but it also will help alleviate when we need to increase our services to the townspeople. And then the other side of town, we have Woodmont Commons coming. Whether some people have liked it or not, it is coming. You know, some people may call it a city within a town, but it's still our town, and we will grow with it, and the economic output of that, they will have quite a bit of business coming to it, as well as a lot of residences. And, you know, it'll change the shape of our town in a way, but I think for the better, because with us becoming the new, you know, central hub of the state, you know, is a big, in a way, competition to Manchester. You know, we may, we'll never be the population of Manchester, but being the next, you know, maybe overpower them economically.
And can we keep our kind of small-town feel with all of that going on?
I certainly think we can, because we still have, you know, certainly, we have the Old Homes Day in town, which is one of the oldest services in, I believe, now the state, let alone potentially the country, that still services old home days.
Yeah, we were one of the first. We were in, I think, 1899 was our first one, if I remember correctly.
Exactly, and I think we're coming up now on 100 years soon.
Over.
Just over.
117.
Oh, that's right. And so we still have the old town feel, we have our old town common. This will still be our, you know, center of town, where the town common is. There's no need to lose it. They may have their little central hub where they are, but, you know, we're also still Londonderry, and we grew up this way. There's many people who came to town when we had no streetlights.
Yeah, I remember that.
Exactly. And, I mean, I remember being a kid, we only had one light in town, but we've grown. There's more people in town, you need to have more services and be more protective for the people.
The streetlight thing? I grew up in Chester, and we had no streetlights in Chester. People started moving in from the city, and they're like, there are no streetlights on my road. So they overwhelmingly voted in favor of putting in streetlights, and then they had to pay for them, so they turned them all off. It's like, okay, he moved to the country, he gets streetlights, and then the next thing they wanted was sidewalks, but the rest of the town was up in arms. Nope, we're not doing sidewalks for you.
Oh, right. Well, that leads me on my other issue.
I was just going to say...
With being on the town master plan, we've been looking at, we've been charged with looking at new ways to expand our walkability in town.
Okay. In addition to trailways?
Exactly. So currently, we do have the one sidewalk that goes from Mammoth Road in front of the middle school, all the way down to the kindergarten.
Yes.
And so we've been taxed with, how can we either expand this, or improve trails and connectability to either neighborhoods or different hubs within the town? And certainly, there's been plans in the works for expanding it to Wilshire along Pillsbury, further west. And certainly, those plans are already in the works there. You know, certainly, it's just waiting on the money. And certainly, we'd love to be able to eventually connect the sidewalk up to the rail trail on Mammoth Road.
Don't forget about getting it plowed.
Exactly. So that is one of the items that we need to look into if we ever go for grants, is that we need to have resources and the vehicles to be able to plow slash snowplow, maintain, so it can be a four-season usable sidewalk. And then eventually, go also west on, sorry, east on Pillsbury towards...
Out towards the shopping center and things like that.
Exactly, towards Woodmont Commons, since they're going to have, there are many sidewalks there to be able to connect there.
They're planning on having a lot of walkability.
Exactly. They're going to have a lot of walkability there as well, and to be able to connect their little town center to our town center.
Am I going to be able to go Christmas shopping in their little town center?
I would hope so.
Okay.
They're supposed to have many small, little shops.
I just have this vision of a really nice Christmasy kind of atmosphere in a little, you know, if they plan ahead on that.
Exactly. Go in and get your coffee, your cocoa.
Cocoa, yep, yep.
Go in, get your scone or muffin.
A few snowflakes, just enough to look pretty.
Exactly. And certainly, we want to be able to connect, you know, our town common to their town common.
And become everybody's town.
Exactly. And considering, you know, the high schools over here, you know, they will not have a high school there. If you want to have people, you know, easily get back and forth to either walk or bike. Pillsbury is not exactly safe right now.
And we want to encourage that walking and biking as well.
Exactly. I mean, I wouldn't take a bike or walk on Pillsbury right now. If there was a sidewalk there, I'd probably do it.
Yeah. Sometimes just going down that road in a car is scary enough.
Exactly. So certainly, these are not projects that are happening, you know, immediately next year, but over 10, 20 years, if we can expand our walkability, as well as, you know, go south on Mammoth Road, if we can get the Max Apples, and then maybe eventually get to the Crossroads Mall, you know, connect little hubs where people can get to, and then maybe eventually get to the Musquash Trails from the center of town. And then it's, you know, you're connecting loops. And I mean, certainly, some of this may be take 10, 20, maybe 30 years to do it.
Would it be okay if I opened a coffee kiosk on one of those little areas?
If you did it and you walked away before the cops came, I wouldn't say anything. But I mean, if you set up a shop with a little table and some coffee, or some iced tea...
You can get one of those little wagons or...
Exactly. You know, I'm just raising money for my books. Don't worry about it. But I mean, it's connecting the walkability, and certainly, all generations want to be able to walk and use their bikes, or, I mean, it's not just the younger generations, these, the older generations, they want to be able to get out and walk and get to where they want to be.
Well, and we're encouraged to do this all the time, and it is hard to do it in this community.
Exactly.
It really is. I mean, I have a walker now for stability, and it's kind of hard to walk on our roads with a walker.
Exactly. Where some of them drop right off.
Or yeah, or bump.
Exactly.
But it'd be really cool to have a sidewalk to go out and walk on.
Exactly. Or, I mean, there's many people who are in an area, or they don't own a car.
Yeah.
You know, if they can actually get out and walk, where, you know, some roads are labeled as 40 miles an hour in town, some all the way up to 45, but I mean, I don't think I'd want to walk on those roads, let alone bike at times, because it gets a little scary. But if I had a personalized sidewalk that I can walk on, I feel I'd be safe on.
Yeah.
You know, I'd want to take my, you know, future kids on. It'd be good.
Yeah, yeah. That sounds like quite a plan.
Exactly.
Yeah. And as long as you don't want it all done in gear?
No, of course not. That would be quite burdensome.
Financially.
I know there's some towns that, I believe Bedford, a few years ago, they actually passed a Warren article to redo all their roads in town.
At once?
At once. They passed...
Wow, how many millions was that?
I think it was quite a few. I don't want to give the wrong number, but it was pretty high.
Yeah, I was just sort of, that was sort of rhetorical. I was saying to someone earlier that we have, when I moved here, I was told that we had more mileage of roads in this community than in any other community in the state.
Oh, interesting.
And we've added so many since then, we must still be up there as number one.
Well, as Yanos has said, that at the rate that we're going to replace all the roads in town, we are on a 100-year lifecycle.
And Yanos, by the way, is our public works director, and he's the one who upgrades the roads and takes care of them and maintains them and the whole bit.
Right. So the funding that we give to the public works department right now is a 100-year lifecycle. It's not enough money. And so if people want to complain about either potholes or roads deteriorating, complain to the town council that we need to give him more money.
Give him more money.
I mean, I've seen this on the budget committee multiple times, that, you know, he asks for a certain amount of money, and, you know, they're like, well, how much more would this take? Well, it'd be quite a bit more money. And right now, we're not funding it, I think, adequately, considering how many people travel our roads.
Well, I was a department head, in my experience as a department head, and before and since, is that they are really pretty conservative in what they ask for. They don't go crazy asking for things that we, the town, don't need. And I think that's one of the things people need to remember, is like, when a department head asks for something, like money for roads, Yanos does not get any more money in his own pocket.
No.
It goes into the roads for the community, so...
Exactly.
It's just one of those things that, yep, he's been asking for a long time and presenting that 100-year plan, that's just not going to get us too far.
Exactly. Well, and certainly, you know, one of the other items that would be coming up on the Warren article this year is for the firefighters' communication article that's there. They're implementing a new communication system that would actually, it's not just for the fire department, but it's also for the police and public works. And it's so that they can actually communicate from all sides of town. I remember that councillor Butler had said at the deliberative session that he had rode along with the police about two weeks ago. He was at the Wendy's, and the cop had to raise his walkie-talkie in the air so that he can maybe get a signal to talk to someone.
So he was in a dead spot.
Exactly. So whether it be our police, or fire, or public works, they need to have the right communication so that they can get back, whether it be for, you know, safety, get a scene, or, you know, get out to a scene that has a fire situation, they need to be able to communicate.
Well, I had a situation last week where I needed to choose the emergency button on my cellphone, and it wouldn't work.
Exactly.
And would this be, and, I mean, would that, I'm just curious, because I know we don't have enough towers in town for just our regular personal cellphones. I know we have a lot of dead spots for us, too.
I don't know if it would work on the emergency buttons on normal cellphones.
Oh, no, it would just be, it's almost like hitting 911, so it's not anything different. My 911 wouldn't work on that phone either.
Oh, no.
The cellphone just was not getting enough signal.
Well, I know this particular program is mainly for the police, fire, and public works.
I just hope that maybe it was up in the air there, maybe it would help the rest of us.
One would hope. But certainly, they need to be able to communicate efficiently, so that, you know, whether it's back to the station, or back to what other vehicles are in the neighborhood, so that they can actually get the right help that they need.
Yeah. And it's not unheard of that we have more than one emergency going on at one time.
Exactly.
Especially as we get bigger and bigger. So, yeah, they need to be able to talk to each other. So the communications issue is a big one for you. What about communicating with people? How do you feel about that?
Communicating with people, certainly. Whether it be at the town council chambers, or out and about. Certainly, when people come to town council chambers, they need to be shown respect, and let them be able to voice their concerns.
Okay. We are one voice at a time here.
Exactly. And, I mean, I've sat in many town council meetings, and, you know, some people may not feel comfortable standing up at the podium, looking at the councillors up at, they're a little bit elevated up, and they may feel like they're being, you know, spoken down to. But you need to be able to show them that you're just another person as well.
I think you can sit on a stage and talk respectfully, so the person doesn't feel talked down to.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, one of the reasons that I started One Voice at a Time is because I felt that people were not getting to have their full say, ever, and they needed to have that place that they could do it. So you can come to it here.
Exactly. Well, and also, I mean, if people, you know, stop me out about whether it be at the grocery store, in line at Dunkin' Donuts, you know, whether it's an issue in town, or another issue that they feel...
Can they call you?
Exactly. They can certainly call me, or email me, when it may be. You know, and I'll give my cellphone number now, it's 603-867-2017. And anyone can call me about any issue that may have...
He just wants to step further than anybody else.
Well, thank you. But certainly, I'm very accessible. I love hearing about the issues in town, whether it be, you know, expanding, looking into a, you know, a dog park for the town, or all the way up to...
What made you think of that, Ted?
I don't know. Or whether it be any issue on development that's coming to town. I know many people have issues with the Stonehenge development on the McGregor's Cut, and it's, you know, all the way up to high-tension issues to low-tension issues. I'm very open to everyone's ear.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it, high tension and low tension. What do you think of that project?
Unfortunately, certainly, they may meet all the criteria to go into that parcel of land, but considering the traffic issues that go on on 28, as well as then where Litchfield meets with 128/Mammoth Road, I don't think it's the wisest use for that land. If it were maybe single-family homes going in there with a lesser density, or condos with a lesser density, but almost 500, almost 600 apartments, and, sorry, I will re-correct myself. It's about 250 apartments.
I was just going to say...
And it's maybe potentially 600 vehicles that would be coming out of there at a time. That's a lot of load on Litchfield Road to go towards 28 or 128, as well as then to go to Hart...
But like you said, if they meet all the criteria...
We may very well have to approve it. There's not much that we can stop.
Yeah, what can we do about those two places where they're going to come onto 28 and 128?
We would have to, it's very much working with the state.
Well, at least it's a light on 128.
Yes.
At least it's a light there.
On 28, there is not a light. We would have to petition the state to put a streetlight on 28.
That's a bad, yeah.
And really, there needs to be. The state already calls 28 and Stonehenge a failed intersection.
How come they don't have to address their failures?
I won't get into how the state spends their money. That's a whole nother issue for a whole nother day.
Okay, we may have a discussion on that someday.
Yes. But certainly, unfortunately, you know, we may have to approve the McGregor Cut, because they may fit all the criteria that it fits for that piece of land.
And people need to understand that once they meet that criteria, there's really nothing that the town council can do to stop things. They have to...
Exactly. And really, it's more on the town's part to maybe improve intersections, or however we can do so. I mean, it'll be quite a bit of an increase to traffic in that area. And so just really stay alert once it comes about.
And from what I understand, they've already improved the ordinance. If this was under the improved ordinance, that they wouldn't have been able to come in, but they applied under the old ordinance, so...
That very well could be, yes.
I think that's the case, so, you know, that's something that we need to keep in mind.
And certainly, I mean, it's, they will be building in phases, so that will at least help. It won't all be all 12 buildings all at one time, but, you know, it's...
12 buildings, wow.
Yes. So when it's fully built, just, you know, be aware on the roads.
Avoid those intersections.
Exactly, if you need to. So, I mean, that's just about it.
Hopefully, more people will be walking by then.
Exactly. And maybe by that time, we'll have the sidewalks all the way up Mammoth Road to there.
Yeah, exactly. So is there something that you are, like, most passionate about in all of this, to be on the town council and...
Probably my most passionate thing would be to increase our services to the fire and police. As we grow as a community, as population, and for businesses, we really need the police and fire services to be increased, not just by, you know, the services, but by the manpower, and how much they're able to do by shift.
So you're thinking, really put a plan in place that will address things as it goes to the future.
Right. You know, certainly, we don't need to get to a staffing level in one year, you know, whether it's be, you know, two, three, four, or five years. We need to have a plan in place, and the right financial plan in place to actually have everyone know where we're going and what we're doing.
And once we have a plan in place for the town council to commit to that plan going forward, I know you can't commit to future town councils and what they're going to do, but sometimes that's where the plan goes haywire.
Exactly.
Is the group that's together now puts the plan in place, but the group that comes down the road is like, well, I don't really like that. That may have been why they went on the town council, actually.
Right.
So that's, it's nice to get a commitment from the community.
Well, I mean, if you can, if you can get a, you know, a recurring plan to bring it back forward again, you know, revisit it, you know, almost every year, I mean, that's what, you know, a lot of condo boards, they revisit their budgets and say, what do we need to do?
Exactly.
Well, that's what the town council should do, is revisit what our services can provide,